For the last that you join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The flag's kind of hidden there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
George.
Do not have any guests to the open forum.
No, I think Kim was going to try to be here, but she had another meeting before this, so...
So, has everybody heard an opportunity to read the minutes last month?
And I told Linda your agendas are white this month because of the snow.
Good idea.
Well, you could add.
I tried to, oh, here she is. I tried to make it into color, but I just...
Anybody see any... yes.
I have one question, Jean. There's a sentence that says, "The hours of the new senior center may be changed to nights and weekends." And I think probably it was meant to add nights and weekends.
Exactly.
Page two.
It's on page two, it was after two and before night.
Yeah, the bottom.
So, just to say be changed to add nights and weekends?
Yeah.
Can you get that, Kim?
Yeah, look, Kim. Sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody see... I'm looking through the page three.
And I did mention to the supporters about doing the TV show, and they all jumped up at once to raise their hands and said, "Oh, no."
Oh, yes, no. You see, in a moment.
I know. Yeah, no, not a peep.
That's a TVV, to be determined.
Well, I'm thinking of something else right now, so I gotta... I gotta drive a little more so I have more time to think.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December?
I move we accept the minutes since amended with the change.
One second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay.
I was not here at the last meeting. I have read them all.
All right. Okay. Guido, at this point, Kim, welcome. Welcome to our meeting.
Hello, Happy New Year.
Thank you for interview.
Happy New Year, Kim.
Guido, would you and Bob like to talk about the implant...
Implementation. I do that all the time.
Thank you. So, at the last meeting, you had, you know, this implementation plan, where do you want to start question? And that's, I guess, the implementation plan as a recurring action item from here on out. And, you know, after the meeting last month, Bob and I, you know, talked here as we were on our way out and said, gee, we really should do something about where do we want to start. So, we agreed to meet before this meeting, and we did about a week and a half ago or so. And we'll pass out what we did here. I got it that way. So, what we did is we got the implementation plan.
We need to start calling it something else, 'cause nobody can say that.
VIP?
Yeah, that works.
We got the plan, and I know, and I had asked if there was an electronic copy of it, and you said, other than this document, there wasn't. Was it like a file?
Not yet, and I started to pull it into it, so I'm happy to send it to you.
So, what we did is we just went through the hard copy and pulled out all of the year-one high-priority actions that had the Council on Aging as a, as one of the primary... What's the word is there?
Inventures.
Yeah, one of the primary responsibilities. So, we went through, pulled those out. So, these are year-one high priority. And it turned out to be four of them that are high priority year-one items, and that's listed on this sheet that I just handed out. I indicated that there's no numbering of them now, which is why I was looking for electronic that could number them in some way to make it easier to reference. But, so I added that column one, you know, which goal is it? And the goals in the front of the report, I just numbered, you know, 1, 2, 3. And so, that's the number on here. And then I put the page number of this report where that's coming from. And we just listed them down here. The last item, which is from Goal 5, said it had the COA department and said it was underway. And I'm looking, you know, looking at that, it seemed like that really wasn't a Council on Aging item, but a Senior Center item. The rest of these, you see the primary champion column. Again, all of these had the COA and the Senior Center, and then one, two, or three other champions listed, and that's what the plus signs indicate there. Since I was typing, I left those out. And I gave them our own numbers that, you know, Bob and I were using to keep track, so 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, and so forth. So, our thinking is that this is the year-one higher priority items. These are the ones we should be looking at first. And the idea would be to, you know, sit down, probably outside of this meeting, and talk to everybody about which ones they would like to take as the primary person from this council to address. We'd start, you know, of course, we're going through, we spent about an hour and a half here doing that. And, of course, you start talking about things. And one that we said, well, gee, this seems like some low-hanging fruit here. In Goal 5, the seek additional input from the community, specifically on their action, it says develop a plan to regularly seek input. So, we said, gee, that's a low-hanging fruit. You know, we take our cue from the Board of the Select, the Select Board right there that just started their bagels with the Select Board, monthly, you know, once a month, Tuesday morning meeting to sit down with whoever shows up to get input. Why don't we do something like that for this council? Have a, you know, some coffee with the council on... And I suggested Tuesday morning just because Tuesday seems to be a day for things of that nature. We have, hopefully, breakfast with the chief.
We're gonna have baked bagels with the COA instead of bagels with the Select Board.
No, no, that's like, you have to come up, you have to come up with your own pastry, 'cause the Select would already have the bagels, yeah.
We'll have to pick something there.
Donuts. Anybody got donuts?
No, not yet.
Donuts are good. Danish or Danish.
Prowls with the council.
For each of these items, and specifically, I'd say for this one in particular, we would need somebody to be, you know, the person responsible for that meeting and jotting down all of the inputs that are pertinent, you know, that are brought up at that session, and then bring that information back here and report on it at the next council meeting so that everybody would hear it. And then, you know, again, there we could discuss the items and decide, you know, what to do with them. And again, this is just one idea. So, that, again, that person would be not only responsible for that particular item, and that's just one item under that action, regularly seek input. There could be other ideas that, you know, that group... So, the suggestion was, and I'm kind of rambling here, but the way we talked about it is that we'd assign somebody to be the council champion for a particular item. And then that person would grab as many two or three others from the council to become a team that would meet regularly, meet, you know, a couple of times during the month, at that meeting, and then maybe before, maybe after, before coming back to this meeting with their suggestions and, you know, conclusions from that particular session, and any new ideas that that team would come up with for, you know, extending that particular action. And if we can pick a person like that for each of these items, you know, that's, that would be step one. I mean, how do we want to start is the question. And I'm suggesting that that be our way of getting started. Once we've got, you know, a little traction under each of these four items, then we could go on to the year-one medium and so forth, and just to go on.
I just have a question, since you're suggesting Tuesday morning. How is the attendance at the moment with the bagels and the select person?
10 to 15, 18, 20, it just depends.
Every week?
It varies. No, no, it's once a month.
Yeah, it's only once a month.
Oh, once a month.
Yeah. I think December was a little long, and it was the week before Christmas.
Well, that's, yeah.
It was in the middle of Hanukkah and all, you know, so it was, but, yeah. I mean, they get a decent-sized crowd.
Okay.
It started, you know, low. I think we had only three or four on the first one. And then, yeah, it started building up.
I'm just curious.
That happens with everything we do here. I mean, that's, except our New Year's party with the band, then we have 140 people there.
I missed that one. It was awesome.
It was.
It was really wonderful.
We had fun, but it was a big crowd.
Oh. What is legal capacity for that?
250.
Ah.
Well, and you, but you, so, prior to having all those chairs and all that stuff stored down there, when we only had long tables before we got the round ones, we could put, like, 10 round tables down the side and then, so it fit. Like, the configuration of it was different, so you could fit that many people. We can't do that now, though, so... Plus, we had to take a couple of tables down, so we had a dance floor, so...
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I think that's a good idea. Plus, there's a lot of people in town who don't put the faces to the names of who's on the council. So, maybe a way of generating that recognition, too.
Right. I think, I want to ask Kim a question, but my, I mean, for this kind of an informal gathering where we'll be taking some notes in terms of our inputs from the people, is there any restriction still?
Yeah, you have to be careful of the quorum issue. That's why the board does it, is a single member.
So, we'd have to limit it to five people?
Or less.
Even then, you, then the question becomes...
Six is our quorum.
But even then, the question becomes, is it really acting as a subcommittee, which still needs to be posted if it's a kind of ongoing... So, is that what you're thinking? Is that you would want to have multiple members present?
Well, I mean, I think it would be nice for everybody to circulate through, not every month, you know?
Yeah.
So that we'd have the one person who always is going to be there to take the minutes and keep the continuity, and the other three or four or five people could, you know, could be any of us, you know, randomly, every month.
I think there's a potential that you're, you could... Yeah, we should just really be careful of the quorum issue and make sure that we don't create a situation where it really needs to be a posted meeting. So, I could give a little more thought to how you might do that, and maybe if it's knocking your numbers down to two of you.
Only two?
Yeah.
Have the facilitator, maybe at least one other council member.
Yeah, I would hope that's at least two or three of it.
Yeah, maybe, you know, switch it out, see how it goes.
The challenge there is then you've got enough of you, and if it's, I mean, the, again, it's a little different concept, 'cause with the, with the board members, they're coming as individuals. And that whole concern is if you have multiple members from a body and there's conversation, and it's a real, it's a slippery slope. And I tend to err on the side of not putting anybody in a position where...
Well, and posting, posting it isn't, I mean, it's an email to the town clerk's office. It's not like, it's a huge bill.
But I think it changes the dynamic, though. I think what you're trying to do is have something that's more of a just open...
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to...
But the idea is, I mean, we have no idea, you know, we did the survey, people filled out the form, we still have no idea what the people want.
Yep.
So, we need to do something to get the citizenry, senior people, to come to this thing and talk to us about what you guys want, so that we do a better job.
Well, one, one thought is, instead of multiple folks being here together, could you also fan out into the community as well?
Like, what does that mean?
Instead of expecting individuals to come up here, not as a group necessarily, but identify places in the community. You're doing outreach, right? That's really what you're talking about. And so, if you want to do it as a group, you can. We just need to be cognizant of the open meeting law. If you want to identify places in the community that you can go, have open conversation, have questions that you want to ask people, bring it back, have discussion as a committee in a meeting. But certainly, there's a few different ways to think about structuring it.
It seems like a very limiting process if, if our goal is to get ideas. We're not bringing them in to make ideas, and we're not running a meeting.
We're not going to decide anything.
I understand that. I'm telling you, my experience with open meeting law is there's, there's discussion can be, it's the line you cross before it can be deemed deliberation. It's that line, we approach it more quickly than most of us would, in our minds, be able to say, doesn't seem like this is really deliberation.
So, maybe go to, like, Whitney Place or different other communities around, and they must, they all have meeting rooms, right? Someplace to be.
How would that make it different?
If you're going as individuals.
But only as individuals is what she's saying. It doesn't matter if you do it here as individuals, doesn't have to be outside.
But, I mean, I've heard of those.
I mean, our thinking was that we'd want to try to get several of us involved.
But I think if you limited... If you had one facilitator and one council member at all of these, that wouldn't be a quorum. And there wouldn't be any votes or decisions made. And don't make any promises.
Don't.
You're just gathering information. Yeah. I mean, and, you know...
And maybe you test it, Guido, that's the other thing. You come up with an approach, you test the concept.
Yeah.
But it is going to be published, the newsletter every month, 'cause we publish all these events that we schedule when we're using a facility here. So, I'd say it wouldn't be that big a deal to, to make it a published meeting, right?
No. As long as you follow the...
So, I guess that's something we'd think of. I mean, if we, you know, our thinking was that it's better if we had several of us always present, so you get different. Somebody hears one thing, somebody hears the same thing differently. So, it would be good to have three or four people to...
And like I said, posting the meeting is an email to the town clerk's office. It's not like it's a big, hard process, and I, if, depending upon when you do it, I just have to make sure.
I think it's a great idea. Would we be stepping on other toes or infringing on other departments? For example, affordable housing? You know, isn't there already a committee that deals with that?
Their batteries.
And then I was looking at space needs. That's probably something that's going to be determined by other groups as well, maybe even the planning. However, there are some of these that we could jump into, like programming interests.
I think that's what he was talking about.
You know, a lot of people, I'm sure, would have input. And I think you have to be careful. When we deal with the recreation, insofar as we don't step on your toes either, so, some of this is good, and some of it, I think you have to walk a fine line.
Okay, let me just clarify then, Bill. These are all items, just on this one sheet of paper. This is that, those 10 pages or more, the 20 pages in this report of items, only pulling out the ones that the Council on Aging, and it turns out in this case, and the Senior Center, are both listed as primary champions.
Yeah.
So, we're the primary.
Yeah.
Now, there are others listed as well, but they're lower down on the list. And this specific item is to develop a plan to regularly seek input on the programming interests, and then they list those. By programming interests, they mean technology, fitness, language, cultural, health services, guest speakers, nutrition, large gatherings, games, et cetera.
I don't see that as a problem.
Those are the categories that we want to say, okay, what do you think we should do? You know, any guest speaker ideas that you've got? And get that from month to month.
Having sat in on the meetings with Bob and with Kim, you know, we had Ed Boehner here, and he's on the committee for affordable housing. You know, and they seem to have a pretty good grasp of it.
They do.
I'm not sure that it's something we want to tell them.
Well, but I think, I think part of that is, I know that I've talked with Senator Moore's office, because the way that the elderly housing, I can't speak to the rest of it, the way it's set up now is that when you apply, you go into a huge master database in the whole state. And I, you know, it takes, I mean, it takes years to get into housing. And it seems that there's a lot of, like I said to Guido, you know, people know there's a couple of empty units down at the bottom of the hill or wherever, and my neighbor's getting evicted, and she applied for housing three years ago, how come she can't move in, and blah, blah, blah. I think that part of it is that, you know, my suggestion to the senators' offices, if they're not going to get rid of that whole master data list, at least regionalize it so that maybe, like, southern Worcester County, northern Worcester, you know, so that people in, I was in Linda's office one time, and she pulled up the top eight people on the list. Not one of them was from anywhere near anywhere, but, like, Dorchester, Jamaica Plain, Metapee, and Boston, Boston, Boston. I mean, I don't think a lot of those people are too interested in moving out here in the sticks, so... But that's, but what I mean is, though, if you, if it was regionalized, then the people that were coming up on Westboro's housing thing, when they have an opening, would come from Worcester County or southern Worcester County. So, the people would be at least in their own area. And people that are in Boston would stay in Boston, 'cause that's where I'm sure they'd be happier. And people who are in Adams and Springfield and out that way would be there. They wouldn't be offered apartments, you know, 50 or 60 miles away from where their church and their neighbors and their address are.
I was just referencing the actual physical facilities, not, you know, the people who are going to live there. I know you've said that right along, that...
But I think, too, that the council can certainly act as advocates to maybe get some of this legislation pushed along to change the way this, this whole system is run.
So, I think Guido's idea is a great idea. So, you've got to figure out a solution. Perhaps one solution is to have the board call a special meeting for an open forum with the citizens that want to come in and then present their ideas. That way, we have a meeting, and we don't, we don't take up the time with a regular meeting. And that way, we, we get people to come in and express their views.
I can't think there should be at least three people if we're going to do this. And be sure you have read every page of rules and regulations. I don't see it as us giving specific, yes, you could get on the list for public housing, but that's where we put the period. We cannot promise or assure or anything else.
Well, and it's the same thing with any of the programs. In order to do some of these programs, I'd have to find an instructor, I'd have to find, you know, a coach or whatever. And we have to make sure that we have enough people to make it, I mean, I'm not going to hire a technology instructor and have two people show up. I mean, you know, that doesn't...
That does make sense.
Or, you know, like we're having one of our other classes right now. It's, I mean, three people are not helping to pay for it, so... And in a sense, we're sort of like recreation in that I like our classes to be able to pay for themselves, 'cause I don't have a lot of money in the budget to pay for, I mean, some things I do, but not, not ongoing classes. So, we need to make sure that we can find an instructor, and it's not just two people sitting there that want to do, you know, basket weaving or whatever, that we've got a group of people that want to do it, so that we can... And I've put it, you know, some stuff in this, like, is anybody interested in coming to play pitch? Well, nobody ever answered. You know what I mean? So, there's been...
There's your answer.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I, you know, like I said, we've got to, we've got to be able to have an instructor or whoever, and we've got to make sure that it's going to, like, fly. And like you said, at the beginning, things go slow, and I get that part, and I'm willing to let things, you know, ride for a few months, but if they're not taking off, then...
Correct me if I'm wrong, Guido, we're referring to this entire thing, but originally, when you were suggesting this, weren't you talking about...
How do we talk about item four?
Thank you. So, it seems to me, when the survey went out, however long ago that was, two years, three years?
Two.
This was addressed. It was asked, what are you interested in? I thought, I could be wrong. Is that right?
Yeah. Well, there were some questions asked.
Thank you. So, if we did a survey then, wouldn't it make some sense to do a follow-up survey to find out what, in specifically, those kind of questions? Maybe put an insert in the newsletter or, or something? Rather than trying to get people together, 'cause you're probably going to get the same people, you're going to get, you know, you need to get a variety of people to respond. So, it's great what you're saying, I'm not saying that, but I know you specifically meant the activities and the so forth. But I think there's other ways to gather information that might be a little less...
We also have the opportunity through the community engagement meetings that are going to happen before we move into our space to find out specifically what other things people want us to offer there that we might need different space for.
Right. That's understated, yes.
Who's handling that? Is that...
That's not, that's, that's not being... It's not, that's, that's not being discussed until after the ink is dried and the papers have been passed, so...
No, actually, it is.
Well, I know it is, but I'm just saying...
We have to put out an RFP to, through the, we have to go through the public procurement process to engage that consultant, so that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
It'll come through.
It's coming, but it's not, like, gonna happen next week, so...
Last month, you mentioned that it might have happened by the end of December.
Yeah, it didn't. We had a few other things creep up.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the next...
I don't, I don't have a firm idea at this point. I do think one of the things, I think, Guido, I applaud you for pulling this together. I know you work with Bob and Bill. I think this is great to keep the conversation moving. One thing, if I may, just the, one of the things that kind of repeatedly came up, I think in our discussions as the Implementation Working Group, was taking a multi-pronged approach to so many things. So, maybe this is a variety of opportunities for people to provide feedback on a recurring basis. We have a new website. There's an opportunity to set something up that people can offer feedback directly through the website. You could have, you know, you know, think of your other municipal facilities, the library, when the REC Center gets programming in the new space, places there where people can leave suggestions. And to all this point, the sustainability or viability of programming, we've also talked about collaborating with other entities. So, you know, advertising through REC, through the library to, for some things that maybe you draw in additional participants to make programs happen that way, too.
I thought that we were also told after that survey that there were committees set up to study some of these points that were brought out in that survey.
We created an Implementation Working Group to go through the results and create the draft, the implementation plan. I'm not sure.
I thought I heard a committee set up to discuss these various requests that were in the survey. That's not the case.
I think it was the, I, I think, I'm thinking it was the Implementation Working Group that was set up.
And the Implementation Working Group came out with this report...
Come up with a work...
Which these actions are, what we have to now do. We are the, that, those committees, that we have to staff them. So, they've identified the organization, Council on Aging, Senior Center, Housing Trust, but now, you know, working groups or whatever we call them have to be formed from, from those people, people from those groups.
So, are we now saying this item four, that we want one leader and maybe one member? Or are we saying we still want three other members?
I think we still want to have a couple of other members. The question is, then how will we limit it? And it sounds like we're limited to two or three people there to keep it safe, unless we publish it as a, as a subcommittee of the Council on Aging meeting, once a month, you know, with coffee. I mean, right? I mean, we could do it that way as well, but then that means we'd have to have minutes and, you know, and so forth. It'd have to be treated administratively like this meeting is.
If we only have two or three people?
Even with only two or three, it sounds like...
I think because for the purpose of what you're doing is, at that point, there's more formality around what you're doing to bring information back to the larger body.
Well, they could still be minutes, but is there something, a legality about how you keep the minutes?
Yes. You have to comply with the open meeting law, and that's really the posting of it as a public meeting with the forty-eight hours notice, the agenda.
Even if there's only two or three people and not a quorum?
Yes, because I think you're creating what's effectively a subcommittee.
So, why, why not use the, the internet and a website? We've got a website, and we're not meeting on it. We could propose to put out a questionnaire and advertise it, like in the telegram, the community newspaper, and what's the other group?
Cable.
Westboro Connects.
Oh, okay.
I think everybody reads those.
Westboro Cable.
Westboro Cable?
Yeah.
And the Westboro Connects?
Yeah.
That's a very popular publication now. And we can propose some questions that center around what Guido has pointed out here and put them on the web.
Are you suggesting that the responses are also entered into the web? Into the internet?
I think they should be.
Because not all seniors have access to the internet.
Well, I know that, but we've gotta get a, figure out...
And that's one of, that was one of the complaints on the survey, is they want to be accessed. They want information, so we can't just ignore the ones that don't have the internet.
Just again, my, our recommendation was this was a low-hanging fruit one way, and then this group that, that starts meeting could add all these other things as well. I mean, it's not that this is the one and only answer to that item, but it was like something that seemed like an easy thing that we could do right away, even started in February.
A meeting could start right away.
Yeah. And then, but then that group of two or three people would come up with all these other things that could be done, and suck in other people as needed to, from the council to help.
I like your verb.
Get the vacuum.
But anyway, then...
So, is there another way that we can reach out to people who don't have...
No, I think both ways.
Yeah. I mean, I think...
One is not exclusive to the other.
Exactly.
I'm talking about seniors who don't have a computer.
Well, then we put it in the newsletter, and we, it go, I mean, it's...
And they would come here to voice their...
Fifteen hundred of them out there every month.
Have a tear-out survey sheet.
Yeah. I mean, I think the one thing that concerns me about the, about doing it all online, I don't know why, yesterday I must have been snowbored, but I was reading a couple different Westboro Facebook page things, and people can be anonymous and nasty on those, and I, you know...
That's why I don't read it.
And you don't know who, I know, but the thing is, if you, if you take the time to write your answers on something, you're more apt to be nicer than if you're sitting behind a keyboard and somebody's, you know, in the basement, and you, nobody knows who you are, and you've got a fake name on your profile. I mean, some of the things, I was, some of it, I was, I was heartbreaking to read some of it, but, and I couldn't say a word. But I think that we need, I mean, and I agree, we could do both things, and, you know, if it's ugly, we delete it. That's all there is to it?
No, you don't, actually.
Okay. But we can't delete it, we have to pay attention to it and give it...
But I think you're talking about a survey. You're not talking about social media, is what I heard.
No, 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 yeah, but I'm just...
Is that you get input. I think you're talking about input, Guido, I don't have it in front of me, but you're looking for recommendations for programming, correct?
Right.
Exactly.
So, I think you're asking questions that hopefully you don't get too many of the nasty responses. I think to your point, we've talked so many things in our conversations as the Implementation Working Group, where these multi-pronged approaches. So, internet, because you do have a lot of people who use it, but then making sure you also get to people in, you could put things up, you could put something up at the library, you could go out to some of the houses of worship, some of the other senior communities, and seek feedback that way, you know, leave paper copies. But yes, you'll, you'll then have the ability to compile through various formats, and hopefully also hear from the people who, for whatever reason, won't make the trip up here, even if afforded the opportunity in a public forum to come share their thoughts. So, I think there's value in doing multiple approaches, and having a public forum that you advertise, you can, you can always try it.
Ellen, did I see a suggestion box out there?
More music and casino trips, that's the two, more music and casino trips, those were two suggestions.
How long has that been out there?
I don't, I don't know. You guys put it up. I'm not, that's what I do with it.
Been a month, right? Okay, I thought it was a recent thing, and how many responses have you got?
Two.
Two?
More music and casino trips.
But I think if you promote that you're looking for feedback, and then I think more critical maybe, is when you actually act on the feedback that you've received, people are like, oh, this actually means something, somebody's looking at it. And, you know, people understand, not everything will happen, but I think it's, it's then that action of, you know, we've added X, Y, Z because it was a suggestion we heard, that you're, you will then start to hear from more people and more ideas.
So, maybe for the next meeting, people can maybe submit what they think should be crafted to send out as a notice, and then we can refine that. Or, it's like somebody can do it, if somebody's willing to do it.
Is there room in that newsletter to put something in?
No.
All right, so this is the deal. If it's gonna be, obviously, we'll have to wait and start it in March, which actually, with the weather, the way it is, starting new things in February is not fun to do, but we have to, like, settle on day, date, time, and whatever for me to get it into the newsletter for March, to start in March, or April, I don't care, whatever you guys wanna do, but we have to make a definite, it would have to definitely be put together the day of our next council meeting, which is February 12th.
What you're saying is, bring in your ideas, so we can put together one?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Maybe do it by a PowerPoint.
PowerPoint. Or no pen.
That cuts it down a little bit, takes the wording out.
Are you volunteering to do the PowerPoint?
No. I don't volunteer anymore.
He just, he's just the idea man, he's not the implementer. Okay.
Does everybody bring something in? How do you suggest, bring in a paper and hand it all to Linda and say, you put it all together, or what, what exactly are you suggesting?
Well, it shouldn't go to Linda, it should come here to the office, so that it can be put together. There's a package, put in your mailbox, pick it up ahead of time. Maybe there can be a blast mailing to the board members that the package is here, pick it up, and, and then have a chance to look it over.
Yes, Ken.
Can I just, I'm, maybe I'm confused. So, we're talking about, what you're talking about now is a meeting, a public forum inviting people to come in?
No.
Ways to get input.
Okay.
I thought it was our input.
Well, that is...
From us. Everybody comes up with a, everybody comes up with a little thing, whether they've talked to people or just not...
That's not what John said.
Okay, that's what I understood. What did you mean?
Do you have any interest?
What I meant was to put together something that will be either in a PowerPoint or an outline form of things that we should ask seniors, and have that come in as a package, have it go to the mailbox that everybody asked.
But how are we gonna create that?
Wasn't that in the survey? And how already?
I thought we were gonna all come in with ideas and then meet there. That's what I understood. I could be wrong.
Well, we got all the back to the survey and asked for the responses to the question.
Yes.
But I think too, John, that when we did the survey, we didn't have the building. And I think some of that may have changed now that there's the potential for...
True.
More space and whatever. So, maybe it kinda, I mean, it wouldn't really necessarily be starting from scratch. But we might get a different, different purview of what people are thinking they wanna put in this new building.
What do we know about the new building? Because if we've got a plan on the new building, fine, but we're not gonna get it, that's a different slant. So...
I thought that we're gonna get it.
I think the assumption is we're gonna get it...
Isn't it just a question of when?
When?
Yeah. So, yeah.
So, it's a done deal?
No, we haven't finished all of the due diligence.
And will it have to come up at a town meeting?
No, it was already approved. We're just finalizing, similar to, you know, when you buy a house, but with many more things to follow through on. We're just completing the due diligence portion of it before we sign everything. We're still expecting, like, late in March, we would take possession of the property.
In the newspaper last, it was last week, the list telegram, I thought it was a little bit of a zinger, to be very honest. A comment, something was written to the effect that the ta, our taxes have gone up significantly here in town, and then that was followed by a sentence that referred to the fact that, well, eight point eight million, the new community center. So, I think it's in our interest to have something similar to what John did a while ago, to have an open house here, come at 10:00 AM, we'll serve coffee, or come at 2:00 PM.
Or serve iced coffee?
Yeah, whatever. 'Cause I have a feeling that the information from the survey, you know, if 300 people wanted mahjong, that gives us something to go with.
We play mahjong on three Friday mornings a month.
Whatever.
That was, I'm just saying, we play mahjong. The other thing, too, that if you're gonna do something like this, you need to really become familiar with what we actually do offer here, because there was a lot of things in the survey that there are things we already do, like, so, you need to, like, yeah, we do that twice a year, or we do that, you know, whatever.
We also have a plan for the new building, is what we're gonna be having space for, these extra programs, and so we can have to find out what the new programs will be in the larger space.
Yeah. So... And if we'll be able to find instructors and whatever for them, so...
It's gonna fall into line here.
Yeah.
For instance, if you, if with this new building...
Yeah.
If there's a swimming lessons for youth for 10:00 AM, and then followed by swimming lessons for seniors at noon time, is there a possibility, rather than hiring two swimming...
Oh, yeah, no, the swimming part's all gonna be taken care of by one, one entity. Jen's been working on that. But I think that once our exercise classes move up to the other building, we'll have a lot more room here to do other things, so...
We'll have a lot more room to exercise.
Well, some of, I don't, I don't think every, all the exercise classes go, but some of the bigger ones will, because then they'll just have no room, so, but that's, that'll make a difference, so...
So, if we don't know yet when the building will be available for usage for us, is it not premature with something in the March newsletter, when we don't even know when we'll have access and what rooms we'll have access to?
I think it will give you a foundation to work off of.
But what we're talking about is publicizing a forum where we can talk to the, to the seniors that wanna share their inputs with us. Now, that's all, we're not talking about, you know, doing any things with the new building at this time.
Okay. My, my reservation is, I've heard since that survey went out and since the results came back, people are asking, so, what's happening? When is it happening? We answered what we wanted, and we're not hearing anything. So, that's what people are saying, they're not getting info about it.
I, may I?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, stepping back, we have a lot of information in the survey, and we do have the detail on areas that, that seniors across the community expressed an interest in program expansion. There is nothing that says that that can't start today. I know we have some... I know we have some constraints, there are space issues, Alma has, you know, there are certain days when they're, based on the current facilities, things can't happen here. But we know come March, some of the exercise pro, March may be a little soon, but spring, late spring, we can move some exercise programs and/or take advantage of space that will be available on the second floor of the community center. I would encourage you as a council to look through the areas that you got a lot of feedback and think about, are there areas that you would strongly support, either as standalone senior center programs, as programs in partnership with the rec center, with the library, with other agencies in town, that they start being programmed?
So you are assuming that there will be access come spring?
There will be, at this point, we anticipate access, what we've been saying, is to the second floor.
Second floor, huh?
Yes. And then, I, my impression is, that survey had a lot of information. What, my impression of this, and I think where Guido was going, setting up an ongoing feedback mechanism. I think you have information on which you can act today and get things going in the next six months, year. This is so that over time, you're seeking regular input and feedback. We've talked about tastes change, desires change, you're gonna have, as, as people retire, different interests in making sure that the programming offering stays relevant based on all of those things. I think what Guido was looking for was a way for there to be ongoing, frequent opportunity for people to share their thoughts and feelings.
Which is what exactly the working group asked for.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to address a specific action that the implementation working group came up with and said, "Develop a plan to regularly seek input from seniors on programs."
I'd be happy to be in that group, but I can't lead it because I never know when I'll have this go there.
Well, and the other thing is too, that it doesn't have to meet every single month, you can meet every other month, you can meet quarterly, you, I mean...
You could brainstorm right now, come up with half a dozen, eight ideas, and, and put those in place, see how they go, three months, six months. You're, to the point, until you, this, the senior center is physically up and operating in the new space, you can ask people for feedback, but I think you're somewhat limited in what you can do.
True.
And at our last meeting, if you remember, Paula and Kathy agreed to work with the rec director and some other staff from other departments and other staff to identify some immediate programming interests and needs when the town does take possession of the building and we start working up on that second floor. So, so I, in my mind, I think there is, there are places where these overlap, but I'm really teasing it apart. This isn't just talking about what programming needs and wants do we have today, because we have a, a good set of data on what those interests are. This is, in my mind, really talking about how do you continue to get input from the community as we go forward?
Kim, is there a centralized group of pages that will summarize the response of the citizens, what they wanted?
I can go back into the survey, I don't know what off the top of my head.
I was gonna say, you all got copies of that app when it came out, so.
I don't have it anymore.
Yeah, I can certainly find that and share that, and then I think for some of the questions we have, we have more of the actual detailed responses, and we can maybe pull from those as well.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful to have.
But even knowing higher level, more educational programming, you know, people do want more trips and more things like that. So, again, looking at, you know, being able to also partner with other, with other communities, other departments, other entities to offer some of those, especially in the near term, when the space is still an issue, because that was the other underlying theme, space is an issue. So if people are concerned that things aren't happening, I think the fact that we worked through creating the implementation plan at the same time the town moved forward with the purchase of that building for the purposes of a senior center on that lower level, and I think that really addresses one of the most significant findings from this work.
It's true, in my experience, it, out in the community, you know, I wanna play bridge at 6:00 AM on Friday morning. We set it up, how many people come? It's, seniors particularly are very good at complaining and finding fault, but they're not very good at putting their words into action. I mean, I may be wrong, but I've had this experience in, you know, other areas beyond the senior center. And it's just amazing that, you know, "Oh, I'd like a new Rolls Royce." Well, yeah, we all would, but it's not gonna happen.
They don't get very good gas mileage.
And we're not gonna go around pouting for the next three years, 'cause I didn't get my car. But I truly feel that seniors are very good at saying, "This is what I want," and they're not following through with it.
Yeah, well, that's...
Yes, John?
I think that's just part of human nature. People know we were gonna get a building and they want it now, and it's gonna take time to do it. And I think, the point was made, and I think it's a very good point, that perhaps every month or so, the selectmen put out a status report on what's happening to the building, and whether they're inspected or not, and how many people are getting their heads up, and that, and the people who've shown, like, why haven't they made it? It is gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be...
Do you think that has always been a, if you have a copy of seven, half a million senior center, or do you, do you bring downtown?
I mean, not this time of year.
I'm sure seniors wanna go out.
No, not, not, not in, no. No. Maybe, maybe in May.
Light again?
Yeah, when it isn't dark at 3:00. And there's not snow falling off the trees, it's scaring you half to death, and, yeah.
On February 10th, the men's fellowship to congregation trip, at 10 o'clock, is going to have Shelby, Shelby...
Talking about Nike.
Shelby Marshall will be speaking about if you're doing it and the senior center. And there are more documents going to be.
Can we write that down, Jen?
February 10th.
It's for the men's fellowship right now, but they're gonna have it, they're gonna put it out in the announcement to the entire congregation. Now, whether that's still to invite other people in or not, I have an opinion.
Well, maybe we can make the interest of it do that.
Anything that's shared, it's, so at this point, we're, we're staying, of course, with a plan that was presented both at town meeting in terms of the timeline and the process for acquiring the building. So really, nothing has changed. The, the plan contemplated, if approved, that we would likely, the soonest we would take possession and start the process of moving into the building would be this spring. So, nothing has changed there. The, the select board, at the point at which things are done, we know a firm date for taking possession, that's all public information that's shared through the select board, so I can certainly make sure, I mean, some of you probably follow that anyways, but once that happens, make sure Alma pushes it out to you. But at this point, we haven't anticipated any major shift in that date.
And you can also read all of the reports that have come from the various consultants regarding HVAC and roof...
But they're not...
Well, you can read what they've submitted, it's on the town's website, so.
But couldn't they put a blurb in the community advocate? Would you say, "Give us kind of an update, are things still status quo, or what's happening, or what's the next step?" Some blurb to let people know that it's still happening or not happening, something.
Kim, I think people, I agree with everything that you said, but I think people either didn't hear that at the beginning, or have forgotten it, or
Yeah.
now they're making up their own mind about what should be done.
Yeah.
Oh, it's amazing the things I've heard. I think too, that once it comes out of executive session, 'cause I know it's still on the selectmen's agenda for executive session negotiations.
Oh, is that how you keep it under the radar?
Well, I mean, 'cause some of it, well, something like that. No, but I think that once it comes out of that, that there'll be more open updates with the selectmen, once all this happens. But right now, there's still negotiating stuff, so negotiations...
But even if they said that, we'd like to know something is happening.
I can pass your feedback on.
Yeah.
The problem with the community advocate with all these small papers, they decide what goes in and what doesn't. You don't have a lot of power over that.
Yeah, they do.
You don't have a lot of control over what goes in.
I gotta turn it down.
Nice tune. Yeah.
Nice song.
I know. Leo and Bob, did you have anything else you wanted to, to present to us at this time?
I think we're all set. Well, that subject, yeah.
Is, Kim, you're gonna get something to, uh, board here so that we can get what has been submitted already by the members of the community?
Identify the areas of the
Yes.
report that addressed the survey? Yep.
That would be helpful.
Maybe, does it make sense if Guido and the three of us connect offline to pull that and then share out what?
Okay.
Then you'll share it with us.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Basically, the question asks, where do we start? Have we at least?
Started?
No, 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 we put the suggestions out there. And we, I think we all know, we can certainly put people in a forum, an open forum, or whatever, right here at the senior center. And we've all, Nancy Fallon would...
What?
What, oh. We'll put together a group that will get this going.
Well, and I think too, once, once March comes and the town actually owns the building and takes possession of it, it'll be a lot easier to, or maybe people will get more excited about working in all of this, rather than try to do it now when things are still kinda up in the air. So maybe spring would be best, anyway. Okay.
Thank you so much.
So, okay, so did we agree to have something in March?
Well, we'll have to...
Or just wait until March and then decide?
I would say, my personal opinion is to wait until after the town actually owns the building outright. Because...
For instance, in next month's senior thing that you put out, would there be room for just a sentence or two that would say?
We're working on it?
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Plans are moving ahead. Period.
Yep, I can do that. Be patient. We're still, we're still building. I don't know, whatever. Okay.
Okay.
I might say this is very helpful for what they put together, so thank you.
Thank you. New business.
The FY25 budget has been submitted to the town. It's almost the same as what I, it's almost the same as what I had submitted. The total budget for the year is four, $464,284. That's mostly salaries and wages, which is, and $29,707 of it is expenses.
Kim, I have a question for you, if I may. How many of the boards and committees in the town of Westboro have a paid, very part-time position, such as Nancy Gage has done for the last
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. Are we the only one?
Very few. Advisory Finance Committee, right now, is the only other board that has a dedicated board secretary, filled board secretary position. It's either, in, in other situations, it's staff who support the boards and committees, the larger planning board, select board, or I do the minutes for the capital expenditure planning committee. In other cases, for some of the boards and committees, it's someone on the board or committee who does the minutes. So I think, right now, Advisory Finance may be the only other committee that has a part, the, the position title is board secretary.
I, I would like, at our next meeting, perhaps, to discuss that issue. Kristen is sitting here taking minutes, but she also has a full-time job out there. I think it's putting a lot more pressure onto her. This is a busy senior center, et cetera, but I would like to have that issue discussed.
Well, that position wasn't taken out of the budget. The secretary to the council is not, it's still in the budget, so.
So does that mean...
For next, for, starting in July, so.
We could certainly go ahead and recruit.
There will be some hours that are paid out of the formula grant, like we did this year. We were hoping that wasn't gonna happen, and we also, the grant for the public health nurse has ended, or will end June 30th, I guess. So one day of the nurse's time will pay for out of the formula grant, and one day it'll be paid by the Board of Health, so. But we'll get to keep him.
That's good.
Yes. Yes.
Did anybody have any other questions?
So are you saying that there's money for a secretarial position beginning in July?
Well, there's money now, in this budget, but it's also retained in the budget that was submitted for FY25, which starts July 1st.
And what is the amount of the budget?
Thirty dollars and 38 cents an hour, but that's, I'm not sure how that will work, 'cause that's a private rate, a personal rate, rather. So I don't know if the person coming in would make that much, or they'd start back at the beginning, no.
It's much lower.
Yeah, so it would start back at, like, step one, with that rate.
So the budget that's going in in
July.
July, would have to be back to step one?
Yeah. Or, yeah.
Even if you hire an experienced, uh...
Well, it doesn't have to be at step one, it would just have to be on the wage scale.
Out there.
Yes. This was basically a grandfathered rate, so it would have to fit within our wage scale. Just so you know, at the time that the budget came in, Nancy had not yet resigned her position, so the budget was built, assuming she continued in that role. We pretty much take the approach, anytime there's turnover, we reevaluate and try to identify if there's a way to do anything differently, just kinda look at things. Just to be honest, the board secretary positions are very challenging to fill because they are so few hours, it's often challenging to find someone who wants to take on that role, because we do have vacancies in other board secretary roles. There, there's no commitment to this, but maybe one approach is, do we, do we combine those so that somebody could have a few more hours? Because many of these boards and committees mean once a month. So is it more attractive to someone to be able to work 25 or 30 hours a month versus just five or six? So, you know, we, we try to look at it through that lens of, but I know we had a vacancy in the Advisory Finance Board Secretary role for probably well over three years. The Zoning Board of Appeals has a similar position that has been vacant on and off. It's just, they're challenging to fill for a variety of reasons, so that's why we try to figure out, is there a better approach?
So maybe on the floating secretary for the town boards, and they could fill in some of the, because we don't all meet at the same time.
Right.
They could, to this committee, that committee, whatever, but still.
That's not, yeah, that's not the current approach. That was my, maybe one consideration.
Yes.
So Alma, the, for the July proposed budget, what's the number for that? Is that thirty?
The total for the year? It's ten hours a month, for twelve months, it would work out to be three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents.
And how much is that an hour?
Thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So that's not accurate then, because?
No, it could be.
They'd have to step it down.
Yeah. I mean, the only difference between us, and Kim and I talked about this this morning, the only difference between us and some of these little boards is we meet during the day, and a lot of them at night, so. We'll, we'll figure it out.
So what do you do about costs, like paper supplies and that type of thing, ink supplies?
There's a line in the budget for paper, office supplies.
And that would apply to a secretary who's?
Yeah, Nancy would come in and get paper every once in a while, and.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd take care of that for her, so.
In no way do I want you to think I have any, I've, I've started and I already. That is not the case.
I'm just a villain, because you didn't have anybody. I don't do that for a master, so.
And we know that, we know that very well, and it's.
But your point is true, I don't know how I'm going to get all this done, so.
And then it has to be posted downtown?
Well, not till after this, so the agreement that I made with Nancy was that I'd give her a set of meeting minutes with the changes on it, and she would take it to the Town Clerk's office, like she usually does. She'd make the changes on her copy, and then, yeah.
It can be emailed to the Town Clerk.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that that's, you know, so.
Well, I thought she had this.
But she doesn't know how to do that.
No, no, which is.
Right, we need to.
She's going to do it the way she's always done it, but be that as it may, then after this, we'll do it. It'll be a little easier to do it, but the meeting minutes, they're not official until they've been approved by this body at the next meeting, so. Yeah.
However, recall the open meeting law training said with, in ten days, somewhat.
Well, yeah, they can be, they can be available in ten days, but they're not, like, until they've been voted on, they're not official. Yeah, they're, so.
Not approved, but they'd still be requested, yeah?
Yep. So.
And also, Mr. Kristin, if there's any questions you should ask, because it's hard.
Right, yeah, I honestly, I've never ever done this before, and I'm just a little overwhelmed.
This is between her with the headset, answering.
Like I said, it's not a transcript, it's, yeah, so.
So I will look, look for guidance.
I will admit that when Carol was speaking recently, the fan came on, and.
There's one right there.
I could not.
I can hardly hear you.
Speak softly anyway, so.
We want better acoustic, so we will, we do, so.
And I've offered this before, but I want to make sure you are all aware, you do not have to meet in this space. We can meet in other meeting rooms in other facilities in town, where you won't have the fan, and it might be more conducive to Westboro TV recording the meeting.
For example, the fire station?
The fire station, Memorial Hall, at Town Hall, the Great Hall, yeah, there's a number of places, so. I know that the fan keeps coming up as an issue. There's a solution.
I mean, I have hearing aids, the fan comes on, I hear it beautifully. But that's all I need. Doesn't work that well, these things, they stick in your ears. Okay, Ms. Director, the Senior Veterans Tax Program Program, the applications will be available on the sixteenth of January. They'll be available here, the Assessor's Office, the Veterans Office, and there'll be a copy of it online that you can pull up. We still have our sixty slots. I'm going to really make a push to get sixty jobs.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Sixty jobs this year, I think last year only had like fifty-five or fifty-six, but I, I'm hearing already from a lot of seniors, so. They'll be back to, the applications will be back here by the second of February, and then within a week or ten days after that. The other thing that we have to add this year, instead of just doing the paperwork for the town, because you become a town employee when you take the job, we have to do some other training about confidentiality and about the, so this First Amendment audit thing that. So that'll be part of it this year. So. If you are going to apply, that's fine, but you won't work here, so. Don't think I'm going to move you into the office, because we can't do that, sorry. But I'll put you someplace good that you'll like, so. The January programs were, I mean, we're already off and running. If you want a sandwich on Wednesday, you need to make sure Kristin knows before you leave today. And next.
To put in the notes.
Huh?
To put in the notes.
Yeah, and next, well, she's got to call in the pound tomorrow morning, so, yeah. So next Wednesday afternoon, we have a man coming from Needham. He does photo restoration, which means he will take DVD, I mean, yeah, not DVDs. He will take cassettes, he will take VHS tapes, slides, photographs, whatever, and put them, yeah, I know, everybody's excited. Put them on, I, I've looked into this before, which is why I haven't done it, because I've got some VHS tapes of my dad with Jack, because it was kind of expensive, but I think he's pretty reasonable, all things considered, so. He has, he, we have appointments set up, fifteen-minute appointments.
He moved it to ten.
He moved what to ten?
Ten-minute appointments, and it gets here until four. I think there's probably eight appointments left.
Okay.
When is this again?
Next Wednesday, the seventeenth.
That I'm very excited.
Mm-hmm, you and a lot of people.
Yeah.
Our Memory Cafe is on the eighteenth. And then we, we're starting January, February, and March, and April, if it's still snowing. We're doing Soup for the Soul on the twenty-fifth. It's Bob's famous homemade chicken noodle. Our gentle yoga class, that was Wednesdays and Fridays, they're now on Monday afternoons also, except today, because we're here and Bingo's out there, so. You know, we're on that Monday. And on the twenty-ninth, we have a young lady from Shrewsbury who's coming to do in culture, Indian cultural dancing, which sounds kind of interesting. It's, yeah. It sounded very interesting, actually, so. And then this, this coming Friday, the twelfth, at twelve-thirty, unless we've all been washed away by the four inches of rain on top of the ten inches of snow.
Fourteen?
Fourteen inches of snow? Yeah, oh, well, see, I only had ten where I live, so.
Do you want us to take?
No, 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 thank you, no, 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 no. Driving this morning was beautiful, but I was afraid those tree limbs were going to come down on my car, I'd be nervous. But anyway, the library's going to be here at twelve-thirty on Friday to talk about what their programs are and what they offer, and so on and so forth, so.
Who's going to be here?
Library.
They're actually, they trust me.
Right, this Friday at twelve-five.
They're presenting to the Select Board, I think, tomorrow.
Yes, they're on the agenda for tomorrow. And then just a little preview, on Thursday, February first, the Westboro Student Council has challenged us to a game of Jeopardy, because they like being beat at Trivial Pursuit, so now we're going to have to.
Tell my wife she'll love that.
Westboro Student Council.
Can you go in, John?
No, she watches it all the time.
I want you to.
I can never get the answers.
My ex-husband is looking at me and go, how do you know that?
And what time is that?
Uh, three o'clock, after the kids get out of school.
Oh.
Yes.
What's the date again, please?
February first.
Oh, thank you.
We'll also be celebrating Chinese New Year, Fat Tuesday, and Sadie Hawkins Day next month, so.
Sadie Hawkins Day?
Yep, it's leap year.
It's the twenty-ninth.
It's the twenty-ninth, yeah. That's going to be fun. And then the AARP tax people will be here starting on February ninth, every Friday morning until April twelfth. So if you have simple taxes that need to be done, by all means, they do a good job. And it's right, so. I don't, I mean, I, I know there's usually a lot more stuff going on, but in January and February, I try to kind of, because if we have to cancel stuff, there's no way to move it to, and it's.
It's good work, and.
And if it's yucky out, then people don't want to come.
At the top, weather permitting?
Well, yeah, I said that in the newsletter, it's like, you know, if, when in double call, I had somebody call today. Can I answer the phone? And she said, are you open today? I'm like, yes.
Well, you can answer remotely.
Well, we can't answer remotely, we can, we can call back messages, but we can't actually answer.
No, I know what.
No, I know what you're saying, but.
The follow-up question is, did you show up today?
I, I think she might, might be out there playing bingo, I suspect. So, yeah.
Are there any other?
Oh, where's the events stats?
Oh, okay, these are, these are from, these are from the month of December, but Kristin also added twenty-two. The first page is twenty-twenty-three, which is last year, and the other page behind that is a year ago, so.
What is duplicated and unduplicated?
Thank you.
Duplicated and unduplicated, you can count it six things, and you can count it six times in the duplicated count, but in the unduplicated count, you're one person.
So one is unique people, the other is how many?
How many times you came into the building.
A lot of people have come to this class, and they hit socializing as well.
Well, that's fine, I, yeah, whatever.
I don't quite.
If they're going to hang around afterwards.
But you can see, one of the, one of the, you know, significant, actually, there are. The unduplicated count went up by, went from two-seventeen to two-fifty-three, but the number of hours that people were in the building went from just a little over two thousand to almost three thousand hours, so.
I wonder what was in November, we had a fan all the time.
Well, I just had her do December, but we can probably figure that out.
So do these numbers on the console?
Yes. Yeah.
So the guests are people who swiped in without having a card in, otherwise they're just checking in. So that's, that's a huge increase over last year. Three hundred and thirty-one people that don't have a Senior Center card.
Well, and it also, it could, also could be that they forgot their card, or they lost their card, so they just checked in as a guest, and I don't think we really can track that, if they just.
Well, what happens when you put your phone number and the name, it doesn't go to, as a?
Yeah, it does.
It does.
It goes on the way, not on the cap.
Yeah, I never do it as a guest.
But not everybody does that, so.
I think a lot of the guests show up for some of the programs.
Yeah.
And the weather program was overwhelming.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, so was the New Year's Eve party, so. I was sitting with two ladies from Alborough. One of them, one of them wants to come here in the spring and teach quilting, so. I was happy to make her acquaintance, she wants to come here in the spring and teach quilting, so.
So that actually leads nicely to the question I was going to have.
I do what I can.
Is it possible to make changes to this, like the way they've got things broken up by category? And in, and in the case of guests, could we ask for like a zip code to try to get an idea?
Yeah, but they don't necessarily tell us where they're from if they're checking in as a guest.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you could add a zip code entry.
So it's a program that we purchased, so you can't make changes to whether they're being able to gather.
Every senior center has the same system.
Yeah.
That's right.
And the categories are also the same.
Very similar.
Which tickets?
I mean, you, you set up a new program, you know, Jeopardy.
A new event, yes.
And it's a new kind of thing we haven't done before. So you get to decide what category it gets into, a nutrition program or health or fitness.
Yeah, it gets those specific categories that are already built.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to choose one of those.
And can you add any of those?
Categories?
Right.
I'd have to talk to the My Senior Center, and most likely not, because they're pre-programmed, but, and they're pretty broad, so it's not.
The only reason I'm asking.
I'm going to reach out to them and find out.
Is our survey had ten, at least ten, maybe eleven different categories, which are the ones that we've been talking about. All of the questions that were asked about different programs and activities were categorized in those eleven categories that they came up with. Recreational activities is one, mental health and wellness is another.
There should be a way about it, I can reach out and see.
Since we've got that, there's a chart, which is, I think, probably what Kim is going to give me to, to show John, lists all of those categories and the percentage of people asking for more programs in that area. It'd be nice if our reports matched that. I'll, I'll give you the list, it's from chart thirty-four of the report.
Take the list and put them in these categories, that's what you'd have, if we can't add or change.
Put them in, right.
You'd have to take the list and assign a category, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, that it's going the wrong way.
It probably is, but that.
The report from you mass is now the published thing.
How many other senior centers have information on the event statistics?
What, statistics like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much all of them around here use the same My Senior Center program.
Can we get any comparable, right, that was funny?
Why?
Just to see what.
Just to give us more work to do.
No, 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 I think it would be helpful to see how they're doing and how we're doing.
John, I.
And then, if we have that information, maybe we have to improve some things.
Went into another senior center, now the Westboro.
Yeah.
Within, whatever. And I was prepared to pay the dues, just so I could get the newsletter. And the lady at the desk was very nice, she said, we do not mail or email our newsletters out of Hawkeington. And I said, oh, okay, thank you.
The Northboro, Marlborough, and Shrewsbury.
You can get it online.
Yeah, you can, because I get it. So the only place, I have the original, you know, survey here. The only place I see where they're specifically asking for programs kind of stuff is here on page eight, it says, thinking about your own future needs and interests, which of the following areas would you prioritize in expanding the programs available through the Senior Center? Lunch and other offerings, art programs, educational programs, performances, volunteer opportunities, outdoor fitness, indoor fitness, mental health and wellness, recreational activities like cards and board games, social activities, coffee hour, informal space for socializing, day trips and excursions, evening or weekend activities. There are not.
It's the roof.
Oh, I know it is, but it just.
I know, but it scares you.
That's very scary.
The sun is melting it off the roof. So there's not really, like, pages of asking what you want to do, when the, I mean.
But that, that exact list, I recognize them, because I was just going over them. It's on, is what the chart thirty-four, figure thirty-four of the report is. And it lays it all out by percentage of what people ask for, and they, you would separate people that attend the Senior Center regularly from the people that responded to the questions and did not. to the questions and did not.
Yeah, but what I'm seeing is it doesn't specifically say what do you want to do, like the bird marching thing. But most of these categories here also, they, they fit in with the ones that are here on this page from the statistics.
That's all.
Well, they're, I mean, health and fitness is on here.
Say there's more of those than, than we have, and so, yeah, it's not exactly
I think these are more general.
Yeah, well, classes and workshops are like art, music, recreation, I mean, some of them are all the same.
Yeah.
But it's just, I mean, specifically, I'm sure we could tell you how many people came for Zumba, but
What falls under tickets?
Hmm?
What falls under tickets?
Nothing. So, what does that mean?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, what do you mean, what falls under tickets?
Tickets, the last column.
Column called tickets.
Oh, no, 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 because that would be if we sold tickets to different things, how many tickets we had sold. Like we could say we sold 100 tickets, but 84 people showed up, but we don't do that anymore, so. We only input the people who actually come to things, so that's where the number comes from, not the maybe they'll come people.
Is this something we'll be able to get every month, that it's a regular basis?
Oh, yeah.
Is that easy reporting?
Oh, yeah, it's easy. And you can be, you can also get statistics on like specific classes, like if you just wanted to see Zumba, I can pull up statistics just on that. So where some of these are more generalized, you can get into a little more specific if you go into the specific class.
Forget, there was one new business item I was gonna bring up and I forgot it. It would have been good if Kim were still here. May I?
Absolutely.
And that has to do with the custodial support for this building. I know we're going to a new building and all of that, but we still are gonna live here for another two years, and so this building still needs to be maintained. And I know it's been an ongoing thing that we don't seem to have enough hours for custodial support. One of the things in particular, since I was out here helping with tables and all for the holiday party and things, I've noticed, well, been noticing this for months actually, that the floors are in terrible state. They really need to be cleaned. I mean, like having someone professionally come in, strip it down
And re-wax it.
And re-wax and the whole bit.
And I've been asking for, since before last summer, and I get the same answer.
And, which is?
The guys have to get together and figure out a weekend that they can come in and do it. Okay, so that's your job to tell them to do that, so I, I'm
Yes, we, we need to have whoever is in charge
Is he town employees you're talking about?
Yeah, but Wayne's only here from like 2:00 to 4:00 every day, so we get him for two whole hours, so
First of all, is it something that Wayne could
I, he could probably not strip and wax that floor by himself, even though we have the machine. He would definitely need to have somebody, Danny or somebody with him. But some of the others, I mean, by the time he gets finished with the trash and getting the kitchen floor washed and whatever, I mean, there's two, yeah, it's two hours, so. I know on the Tuesday nights that he's here late, he does a lot more cleaning than, you know, just every day, but, and gets to the floors, more of them, but still, and now we've got all the footprints and all that nonsense, you know, and he was by himself today, Danny wasn't around today, so. No, I know.
We can't come up with a solution. We, we have to have Jim, Wayne's boss, figure this out, and I, I really think that, you know, they need to understand that it really looks bad. I mean, it, it looks very bad out there.
You're not gonna get an argument from me.
And I think something has to be done, and if you think it would help, maybe we can write a letter as a board here to, to the town manager, like, say, I'm sorry I forgot to do it when Kim was here.
No, it's okay. We still have to be here for a couple more years.
Is that something that we, we, the board should do?
Write a letter.
Write a letter, is that okay?
No, see, we're not, Linda, we can, I'll ask for work or something.
Anyway, I second Wayne's, Guido's comment to send a letter to the town and tell them that we got a filthy floor that needs help.
Right, we have that right. In our, I've got a lot of stuff here, but I'm making a note of that.
I, I had called the prison about doing some painting, but they haven't started that program up again since COVID.
The prison?
It's blank.
Where's the prison?
So Worcester County House of Correction used to have a program where they had inmates who were getting ready to transition into whatever, and they'd come in for a day, there'd be guards here with them, and they would paint or clean the floor, do whatever. They painted the kitchen, they painted the offices, they, they did the deck 100 years ago, if you can tell. Yeah, so they would come in, but they haven't, I don't know if they've started that program up again, but I can investigate that again as we get a little closer to the spring. And it was great, because all I had to do was feed a lunch, so we'd just go to Westboro House of Pizza and, and they were excited, because I let them each order their own grinder and they were so happy and cost me about 150 bucks and we got everything painted, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so for the floors, I will send them a letter to
Jim.
Jim.
Let CC it to probably Kim and Chris Payan.
Kim and Chris
PDW director.
Do one of the three of us get together to draft a letter, or?
Yeah, that's fine, we could, whatever.
Do you have some time after this?
I'm pretty available.
After this meeting? Do you have some time after this meeting? If Alma still has a few minutes, we can maybe pull it together.
Our next meeting is February
February 12.
Is it 12?
Yeah.
That's the beginning of Chinese New Year. May I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks.